One.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 22nd, 2021 meeting of the Planning Board for the Town of Chatham. My name is Catherine Halpern. I'm Chair of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. Please note that this meeting is being conducted by remote participation only, and I'll be reading a few points about our remote participation procedures in just a few moments. This meeting is being broadcast live on Channel 18 and will also be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing. So let me go through the points regarding remote participation. But before I begin that, I'm going to ask that anyone who is not speaking, please mute your telephone or please mute the microphone on your computer. And also, Planning Board members, please do keep your videos on. But all other participants, would you kindly turn off your video on your computer if you are not speaking? So if everyone could mute their phones and mute their computer microphones, Planning Board members, keep your videos on. All other participants, please turn off your videos as well. So pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order, suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, GLC 30A 18, and the Governor's March 23rd, 2020 order, imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting, while in progress, may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410. That's 1-508-945-4410. And the conference ID number is 510-372-724. Again, that's 510-372-724. And you may also join the meeting online using the Microsoft Teams app through the link that's in the agenda that's posted on the Planning Board page of the town website. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. And as I mentioned earlier, a recording of the meeting will be posted on the town's website as soon as possible. And if you are recognized by the chair and you are speaking and you become muted inadvertently, you can press star six on your phone. A few additional points regarding our remote participation procedure. We will follow some formal procedures for remote participation. I will begin with a roll call of all Planning Board members to make sure everyone is present. When you are, you should only be speaking if you're recognized by the chair. And we will ask all non-board members, citizens who are participating in the call when you're recognized by the chair, could you please repeat your name? And if you're connected by phone, please also give the last four digits of your phone number before you begin speaking. We just need to always be able to clearly identify all speakers in the meeting. Also, I'll mention that after an item on the agenda has been discussed by the Planning Board, I will ask for any citizens or non-board members if they have any comments or questions. And again, when you're recognized by this, by the chair, you may unmute and speak, but please repeat your name and the last four digits of your phone number. The Planning Board tonight will be taking all votes by roll call vote. And also, at the end of the meeting, we'll close with a verbal confirmation of adjournment and will note the time of adjournment. So let's start with the roll call of the Planning Board members. Arts Brew.
Arts Brew, present.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, present.
Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin, present.
And Bob Worchafter.
Bob Worchafter is present and calling in on 6417.
Thank you, Bob. And Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, yeah.
And Roger Griffin.
Roger Griffin, present.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I'm also present. I should also ask, before we continue, if anyone is recording the meeting. It is all right to record the meeting, but you do need to notify us. All right. And then also, before we begin, I will ask if any board members need to recuse themselves from any matters on tonight's agenda.
Bob Dubus, I have to recuse myself on Enterprise Drive.
Thank you, Bob. All right. So let's go to our first agenda item. And that's the minutes from our March 8th meeting. I will just ask if any board members have any corrections or additions to the minutes as submitted in draft. There being none, may I ask for a motion to approve the minutes for the March 8th Planning Board meeting?
Arts Brew will make that motion.
I have a second to the motion.
Bob Dubus makes a second.
Thank you. So we'll do our roll call vote. Arts Brew.
Arts Brew, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Tom Gagin.
Approve, Tom Gagin.
Bob Worchafter.
Bob Worchafter, approve.
Thank you, Bob. Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, approve.
Roger Griffin.
No, I can't approve because I wasn't there last year.
Oh, yes. Oh, I'm so sorry. My error, Roger. Yes. So you can, you can abstain. Your vote would be to abstain. Thank you. And this is Catherine Halpern. I approve the minutes as well. Great. So let's go on to our next matter, which is the pre-application for 221 Crowell Road, which is proposed replacement of the existing salt shed. And I believe we have some presenters from Weston and Sampson. Is that correct? Tyler, are you presenting? All right. So please introduce yourself and please give us your presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Yep. So my name's Tyler Caffalici. I'm with Weston and Sampson Engineering, representing the DPW of Department, Department of Public Works. And Ally, is it okay if I share my screen or do you want me to talk from yours?
You can share your screen if that's easy for you.
Okay, I got it up right here. Okay, so I'll run through an overview, just to give the board a summary of what the project is. So the project's going to include replacing the existing salt shed located at 221 Crowell Road. This is a plan showing the existing conditions where the existing salt shed is adjacent to the vehicle storage garage. There are some material storage bins to the east and to the south and bike path to the, to the south as well. We're proposing replacing the existing salt shed with a new high arch gambrel salt shed. And I got some proposed, I'll show you the guys the rendering. So the, this is a photo from the existing bike path adjacent to the salt shed. This is what the existing salt shed looks like today, and we're proposing a high arch gambrel salt shed. And this is just Photoshop showing what the proposed salt shed would look like. So the new design provides a higher design to allow salt to be dumped directly into the salt shed. And also with the higher rafter design helps prevent damage from, you know, loaders and such like that. The existing salt shed is located in the municipal district. And this would be based on the zoning bylaws that just, you know, be an allowed use as well. So not changing the use, just replacing the existing salt shed. Also, on the salt shed, there's a proposed rear canopy off the back to provide additional covered storage for the DPW's vehicles or equipment. And there'd be propose, replace the proposed pavement. We'd be reusing and reusing existing drainage that's already out there. You can see the existing salt shed limits in the back, so we would just be putting the new one down. Also, the new salt shed would store roughly 2,000 tons of salt, which is approximately 800 tons more than the existing salt shed, which stores approximately 1,200 tons. So there would be increased volume storage for the proposed salt shed as well. That's basically it, taking the old salt shed down and replacing it with a new, modern salt shed. That's better fit for the DPW operations.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Yes. Thank you, Tyler. This is Catherine. So we will go through the board and see what questions we have. And again, this is a pre-application. So one thing I wanted to suggest, if we can have at the formal, or even if you can show me with, are we, we're looking at your screen now? Even if you can show me with your arrow, it's helpful to have an overlay of the existing shed footprint and an overlay of the proposed shed. Or can you show me, are they the same footprint? Has it changed at all? Or maybe you can show us with your arrow approximately where the existing shed is, or is that?
Yeah, the existing shed's hard to see. I guess it's in gray, but I just highlighted it in orange.
Okay, that's very helpful. All right. Thank you. So that was one question I had. And then, can you explain a little, in more detail, the operation of the salt? And why, although the height of the building is not specifically within the purview of the Planning Board, it is something that we need to look at? And can you explain specifically why the new shed is needed? And explain in more detail what the operation of the salt storage is there?
Yes, so.
And how it's done?
Yep. All right. So I will start with the existing conditions plan. Then I'll show you photos of the existing salt shed and walk you through how the new salt shed operations would be different. Try to answer your question here.
Great.
So if I go back here, so currently, so the DPW will store salt in the wintertime and will, will use a loader, a loader to pull in, back out and fill up salt trucks that are stored in here. And then they'll go out and sand and plow the roads. And when they run, when they run low on salts, they'll send out a delivery. They usually, deliveries usually come in, you know, eight, like tractor trailer trucks. And they'll come and they'll dump the salt right out in front of the salt shed. And then the DPW employees will have to use the loader to pick it up outside and dump it inside the salt shed. Because of the low building height, you're not, it doesn't allow you to dump directly into the salt shed. And because of that low design, you get the double handling of the salts. And also, sometimes the loader nicks and hits the, the salt shed and does damage to the rafters, which I'll show some photos of. The salt shed has also been around for a long time and it's withstand some significant damage and is definitely in need of replacement. So I'm just going to walk through a couple existing photos to give you guys a better sense of the site. So, so this is the front of it. This is an example of a new salt shed. Sorry, the photos are a lot of, so this is the high arch gambrel. You can see the difference in height at the, of the shed, of the operation door. And if we keep going, there should be, so this is the south side. To the left here is the, the bike path. And actually, the bike path goes up in elevation towards the back of the site here. Again, the front side, this is some damage or rot. And you can see the sand actually falling through the wall here.
Yeah.
Again, in the north corner. Looking at it from the side again, there's some damage on the roof and a lot of buckling on the walls. This is the inside of the shed of the push walls, and they've seen some damage. This example of loaders hitting the rafters. Another here. Some roof missing in the back. This, also having holes in the roof isn't, when water gets in, it makes the salt clumpier and can lead to damage of salting equipment. This is the wall being pushed out. So this piece of wood is supposed to be uptight against here, and it's pushing on the exterior wall. So lots of structural damage. There's small holes in the roof that you can see water leaks in, and it's rotting the roof rafters. And the outside push walls, you can see the wood near the ground is starting to rot out in several places. Again, the wall being pushed out and some damage on the wall, holes. It's kind of along this whole wall. So salt shed's seen better days. And this is the picture of the back there. So the, the new salt shed operations would be different because the salt shed, the salt shed delivery trucks could come, turn around in the site, and then back right in and dump the salt directly in, in the shed. And then there's no double handling. And because of the high rafters, it can actually pick up its back, dump and drive right out. And there's enough clearance so it won't hit. So because of that, the maintenance and longevity of these, the new proposed salt shed would be much longer. So there are some benefits for the new design.
Great.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So I think what I'll do is we'll go through board members, see if you have questions or comments for Tyler. And again, this is a pre-application, so we just want to consider the plan in terms of our site plan review criteria, which Ally has summarized for you on Page Two of the staff report. I think we're all pretty familiar with them. So Arts Brew, do you have questions or comments for Tyler?
Yes, Arts Brew. Let me start with a question first. Tyler, is the load, after the solid is in the shed, is the loading operation into the DPW vehicles the same as it was in the past? Where you have to use it with an, with an unloader?
Yeah, once the salt, well, once the salt is in the shed, the operation would be same. They'd pull in, pick up a scoop, back out, and then dump it in, in the back of the shed.
But where is the, where's the vehicle when the unloader is actually, is it all done within the salt shed? Or is it outside? Is, there's a transport outside?
Yeah, it's transported outside. So if you imagine a dump truck driving along, parking here, the loader will pull in, back out, and then dump it in here. And there'll probably be a line of, of trucks waiting to be filled up. And then they, they could leave the site to go, you know, plow and salt the roads.
Okay. All right. So a couple of things. I must compliment you on having an existing condition plan which shows the utilities. Sometimes it's a challenge to get some of those submitted to our board, so I do appreciate that.
Thank you.
I, I think the major thing that I would say is probably stormwater. And I, there's some information on it in here, but if you could, when you make your formal submission on it, if you give us some background associated with that, because I, I believe that this is going to fall underneath Standard Five of the Stormwater Handbook, where land use with a higher potential pollutant load, especially with salt. So if you could take and address those components of how you're going to deal, deal with that and provide any kind of a pollution prevention plan or any kind of rough. It looks like there's, there's two different areas. There's, some of the drainage goes into one leaching area, leaching structure. Another goes into a different one, the site. So there's, could be runoff associated with this to, into two different areas of your underground infrastructure. So if you could just pay attention to that and provide information when you submit the plan, that would be helpful.
Yep. And we can provide more information. And just a quick, little footnote on that is we're going to be, we're using the existing storm drainage, which collects it, like you said, and goes through oil grit separators before going to the leaching chambers. So that would, that would meet the land use for higher potential pollutant load, stormwater requirement. So as far as this project goes, there's no, like, we're not proposing to do any updates to the stormwater or make any changes to the existing out there.
Yeah, but it would just be helpful for you to provide some sort of a narrative, what the storm, current stormwater system is and how it's addressed in Standard Five, okay?
Sounds good. Thank you.
The other thing is, I know this is a salt shed, I'm familiar with them from my practice too. Any kind of infrastructure going there from the utilities, is there lighting in there? Do you, if you're proposing any type of utilities, show them on the proposed plan, of course, and how they're being routed on the site.
Yes, we'll show that. We are actually planning on reusing existing conduits between these two buildings, but I will make that more clear on the next, it's a middle.
Okay. I, I really don't have, and if you have any lighting that's going to be exterior to the structure, you know, provide us the type of fixture it's going to be and a cutoff design, right? Those are some of the things that I picked up when I went out there and took a look at things. I think this is going to be a huge improvement from the standpoint of allowing the, the deliveries to be done inside the salt shed, eliminating a double handling. And it's, it's certainly warrants, in my opinion, allowing relief from the standpoint of the height restriction that we have in town. It's, it's, you're talking about improving, you know, quality, water quality issues. And so I would encourage a positive response to the Zoning Board of Appeals Association associated with the height variance for this particular use. That's all I have, Catherine.
Hey, our, real, real quick, you cut out on my end for a little bit. I, I heard you say you wanted the type of fixtures for lights and stuff like that. And then I heard the improvement of water quality at the end there.
Right. Yeah. So if you, if you have whatever fixture it is, submit the type it is, if it's attached to the building or whatnot, we're interested in the ones in exterior to the building, not interior, of course.
Okay.
So.
Do you, would you want like a photometric plan showing the limits of light? Is that where you're getting at on that or just?
We don't have a criteria for that. So I'm not sure that that's really a major issue unless you're putting up poles that are 25 feet high. Then, you know, if you just put in them on the building, that I would say that you're, you're probably going to be safe in this location. Not sure that there is a close residence to the actual building itself.
I think the closest one is right here. The other ones are well protected from, from the light.
That's what I understand.
Okay. All right. So that's fine. We can do that for sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
Great. Is that it, Arthur? This is Catherine.
Yeah, yes, that, that was it. Thank you.
Okay, great. Terrific. Thank you, Arthur. So Warren, comments and questions for Tyler?
Yes, Tyler. Warren Chain. I am very much in favor of the, of the proposal, but I do have a couple of questions. I believe you had said, if I heard properly, that the capacity of the new shed would be something like eight times the capacity of the current shed?
Nope. It'd be like 60% more. So current salt shed is, yeah, current salt shed is roughly 1,200 tons. The new one would be 2,000 tons.
And I'm not even here, but I assume that the 60% increase is the appropriate size for the new facility.
Correct.
Again, that's not our purview, but at the same time, I would hope that this is big enough for all foreseeable needs in the future. Is that right?
Yes, that's, and my conversations with VPW Director, that's correct.
The height of the building is another question that I have. It is higher than the current building, correct?
Correct.
Will that require a variance?
Yes.
And also, is there, is there any issue at all with respect to the airport? Either because of the height of the building or the lighting on the building, which would warrant a review or coordination with the Airport Commission?
I'm not aware of any conflict that the salt shed would have with the airport. And the proposed salt shed would be 40 feet tall. Do you, do you know if there would be any criteria that would trigger that? Or someone I could reach out to?
Yeah, this is Catherine. I think Ally could help connect you either with the Airport Commission or with Terry Whalen. I think there are some restrictions from the FAA as to the type of development and height of buildings, specifically in the runway protection zone, as I understand it. I do not believe that this is in the runway protection zone, but it's something that can be looked at. Yeah.
We can check those boxes to make sure we're good there.
Yeah, that's great.
The only other questions I had, Art has already covered just drainage and general lighting. So I have no further questions. Thank you, Tyler.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Warren. And let's go to Tom Gagin. Questions and comments for Tyler?
Tom Gagin. I've been on site. I have no questions.
Thanks, Tom. Bob Worchafter. Bob Wurchafter, do you have questions or comments for Tyler about this project?
Yeah, this is Bob. The only addition to the recommendation for the lighting is that it, it be LEDs and that, if possible, they have motion detectors, so they're not on all the time.
Yep.
That's all I got.
Great, thank you, Bob. And Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus here. No, I was there for the building of the first one before they used to pile it outside, which wasn't very helpful. This has been something ongoing. I know with the town for a long time to be able to dump the truckloads of salt and a truckload of sand in there, so they don't have to handle it. And so that when it's in the building, it doesn't disperse if there's a rainstorm or something. Though I'm completely in favor of this.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
And Roger Griffin?
No, first of all, I want to say thank you, Tyler, for the, the overview was great. It was, it helped a lot. I took a, I was down there Saturday, and obviously, yeah, there's no doubt the, you know, the current shed we have now is, you know, is doable, but it's tied. It's, it's time, I think it's, I think it's definitely necessary. So I have no question, I have no questions, other than those comments, I'm good.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. So I'm just going to mention to the board that we need to consider, we need to consider and vote whether we'll accept the pre-ath. We also need to consider whether we want to do a site visit altogether. I think a lot of board members have already done an individual site visit. And we also want to consider whether we want to require a public hearing. This matter will go before the ZBA. They are requesting, they do need to request a variance for the height consideration. The ZBA will be having a public hearing therefore, which will be specifically focused on the height consideration and the variance that's requested. So we would just need to consider whether we want to ask for a public hearing in regards to any matters that are more specifically related to the site plan considerations. So why don't I just go through the board and ask for your, in your opinion, on site visit and on public hearing? Art Sprou?
Art Sprou, Catherine, I was out at the site, I took a look at it. It's, it's pretty straightforward. There's not a lot of issues associated with it. I don't believe I need to go for a site, site visit. Similar from a public hearing standpoint, there, there, you know, the closest of butters is residential. It's quite a ways away. If there's a public hearing with the ZBA, there are any issues that come up there, we certainly can, can roll into what we have to. But, you know, our hearings will be available to the public anyway, even though we don't officially have it. So I don't know that it's necessary for this site. That's it.
Thank you. Warren, can I just get your view? Site visit or, and public hearing?
Warren Chain, I've been out there, I know the site fairly well, having staffed some of the flu clinics that have been done at the DPW garage, which is almost adjacent to the salt shed. The, the only, I don't think a site visit for the, for the board is necessary. I don't think a public hearing is necessary, given that there will be adequate public voicing of issues at the ZBA board meeting. All I would suggest is I would like there to be some comfort that the Airport Commission is aware of this and has no issues. Anything touching the airport, literally or figuratively, seems to be a matter of a cause celebre frequently. And while I don't think there is any issue here, I think it would be appropriate for the petitioners to
Yes.
be able to state positively that there is no issue.
Great, thank you, Warren. Tom Gagin, just your opinion on site visit or public hearing?
Tom Gagin, no site visit, no public hearing.
Thank you. Bob Wurchafter?
Bob Wurchafter, no site visit is needed and no public hearing is needed.
All right, and Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus. Since this is something that's already in place and just being, being replaced with a new one, I don't believe that a few feet are going to make a pile of difference to too many people. I don't, this is something that's going to have to happen no matter what. And I don't believe that we should have an onsite inspection. I've been there plenty of times. And we, we don't need a public hearing. We don't need an inspection. And I think the other people will, will do all that for us. The other thing is, if you've ever noticed, my shop is around the corner and I've never seen an airplane fly over that particular spot. It is not in the runway. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Bob Dubus.
I just, I just want to point out to Bob's point that it will make a pile of difference. It is a pile. It's a different pile. I, I thought that was great.
Okay. Thanks, Bob. Bob and Bob. So Roger Griffin, your thoughts on site visit or public hearing?
Well, we've all been out there, so I really don't think we need a site visit. We've been out there many times. And no, I don't think it requires a public hearing at all. I would just agree, just, you know, just let it go through and see what happens.
Great, all right, great. And this is Catherine, and I agree with my colleagues. I don't think a site visit is necessary. I think most board members or all board members have already visited the site. And I don't think that a public hearing is necessary in addition to the public hearing that the ZBA will be holding. Before we go to vote on accepting the preliminary, the pre-application, I'm sorry, I'm just going to ask if there's anyone from the public who has any questions or comments on this matter. I'll give a few moments in case you're muted. All right, there being no comments from the public, and if there are no further comments from the board, I think we've made clear what additional information we'll need for the formal site plan review. So that being said, I would ask for a vote to accept the pre-application for 221 Crow Road.
Art Sprou, I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Roger Griffin, I'll second the motion.
All right, so let's do our roll call vote. Art Sprou?
Art Sprou, approved.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approved.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
Bob Wurchafter?
Bob Wurchafter, approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern, I also approve. So thank you very much, Tyler, for your presentation. With the permission of the board and the public, I'm going to suggest that we change the order on the agenda. And before moving into the formal site plan review for Enterprise Drive, why don't we attend to our recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals for this matter regarding 221 Crow Road? We do have a request for comment from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Let me just take a look at that. There you go.
Chairman?
Yes.
Bob Dubus? I, I think we should send a positive, a positive note to the ZBA, wherever it's going.
Great, all right. Would you like to make that motion and we'll just go straight to vote?
Yes.
All right, may I have a second to that motion?
Art Sprou, second.
All right, so let's do our roll call vote. And this is to send a positive recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals regarding 221 Crow Road. And just as a point to consider, they didn't include specifically reference to the 40-foot height, even though that is not specifically in our purview. We do need to understand that our positive recommendation does include that we, that we feel that the increase in height is warranted. So Art Sprou?
Madam Chairman, Bob Dubus. It is imperative that we have that height for the trailer trucks to dump. That's been a big problem before with the, well, our salt shed. And considering where it's located, I don't think there's going to be a problem with that.
Okay, great. So the motion's still on the floor and seconded to send a positive recommendation to Zoning Board of Appeals on this matter. So let's do the roll call vote. Art Sprou?
Art Sprou, I approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, I approve.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, I approve.
Bob Wurchafter?
Bob Wurchafter, I approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, I approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, I approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern, I also approve the positive recommendation to Zoning Board of Appeals. All right, thank you. Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you guys very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. So let's move to the next item on our agenda, which is the formal site plan review for Enterprise Drive. And this is for the proposed construction of a four-bay warehouse building. Bob Dubus is recused from this matter. So he will not be voting. So do I have, I think I have Thad as presenting for this. Is that correct?
Good afternoon.
Great, please go ahead.
All righty, Thad Eldridge, East Southeast. Give me a moment, I will share my screen.
Thad, I just stopped sharing, so you should be able to.
Oh, excellent, that's why the button was missing. Share, and this one. All right, there we are. So again, for the record, Thad Eldridge, East Southeast, representing Burt Hill LLC. We're before you with a four-bay warehouse in Enterprise Drive. And we were before you a few months ago with the pre-application. The four bays, we're not sure what the uses will be. Those will vary from storage. Contractors may use one as a shop. It's a perfect use for the industrial zone. And since we met with you last, we have added a couple of parking spaces. And we've also modified one parking space to ensure it meets the 10-foot setback from the road. Go over the, the design. We have the one large curb cut. I know it was mentioned, could we go down to a smaller curb cut? It would be very difficult to maneuver to the first bay and even the second one with a, with a smaller parking area. The Cape Cod berm that's there now will be removed in vicinity of this large curb cut. There'll be a three-inch rise from the gutter line up to a high point. And that's right in this area here where the contours take an angle. That will effectively act as a Cape Cod berm. It will keep the, the flow from Enterprise Drive within the drainage for Enterprise. It'll keep the flow from locusts on locusts. We still have to file with the Board of Health for the septic system, along with the tight tank. And we also have to file for a building permit. We've added lighting to the building. Each unit will have its own light. There is a utility pole across the street with a light on it that does provide some light on the street. But as the typical use of these buildings is limited during the nighttime, there was no, it didn't seem to be a need to put extensive lighting here. I know there was a comment from staff about pedestrian access. There are really few people that walk up and down Enterprise Drive. The uses of this building really dictate, somebody's going to drive there, they're going to park in front of their bay, there is an aisle for their access to the door. And otherwise, it's just a large parking lot. We do have plantings that are proposed. We have selected native plantings or similar. And we considered a rain garden or bio-retention basin, but it, it fit in better to have the, the leaching pit for the roof runoff. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Great, thank you, thank you, Thad. This is Catherine. I'm just going to comment on a couple of things. I'm going to read the referral responses. You have all of these in Ally's staff report, and we did also receive a response from Bob Dunkinson. So first of all, from the Central Permit Coordinator, HBC approved the application for new construction without conditions on March 3, 2021. And also from the Health Department, I have reviewed the proposal for the warehouse at the above-noted property. The septic system and proposed tight tank for floor drains must be approved by the Health Department prior to construction. The proprietor of this business is required to apply by all applicable state and local regulations regarding the handling and storage and disposal of any toxic or hazardous materials that may be used at the facility as part of the operation. No floor drains are to be connected to any subsurface sewage facility or any other drainage structure. And from the Fire Department, the Fire Department has no issues with this plan. And from Bob Dunkinson, Health and Natural Resources, I reviewed the stormwater runoff drainage calculations and formal site plan dated January 25, 2021, relative to drainage, and have the following comments. One, based on review of the above information, the drainage systems, if installed as shown and properly maintained, should provide adequate capacity based on soil conditions and proposed structures sizing. Two, rather than the in-ground structure proposed for roof runoff consideration, for roof runoff, consideration should be given to a rain garden as a landscape amenity. And point three, while no plantings are shown as proposed on the plans, any planting should be native, low-watering, and low or no fertilizer requiring species. Any grassed areas should be a low, low, low-maintenance variety. That's from Dr. Dunkinson. So let's see, let's go through the board, see if there are additional questions and comments. Art Sprou?
Art Sprou? Hi. Thad, I want to compliment you on showing all of the existing proposed utilities. I'm a big supporter of that. I appreciate having them highlighted on even a colored plan that I received. I, I guess the only concern I have is, is there's quite an impervious area in here, and there's only that three-inch lip that you're looking at to keep it on-site. That, that's not a significant item, but it's, it's about the only concern that I have is, is if there is an excessive or intense rainfall event that surcharges your leaching pits. And it, obviously, what's going to happen, it's going to flood the parking lot and it's going to spill over into the catch basin that's in the road. Where does that drain line that's in the road discharge to? Do you, do you have information on that, Thad?
A little bit. The town discharges out to daylight. It heads towards Frostfish Creek.
Okay, okay. All right, if, if there was no issues or concerns raised by the DPW on that, I'm okay with it, Catherine. I don't have any other comments.
Okay, great, thank you, Arthur. Warren Chain?
Yes, this is Warren, Thad. I too appreciate the details added.
Yes, this is Warren. Thad, I too appreciate the details added to this this plan. I think it's it's quite well done. At the initial presentation, the security light that's noted on your plan on the utility pole, which is I expect on countryside landscapes property, was mentioned as being relocated to the other side of the pole such that it would provide maximum light onto Enterprise Drive. I certainly don't think a street light is appropriate. And the security or the lighting, which you've now added to each of the bays, I think is a is a good plus. But with respect to all of those lights, do you know if they would be on during all periods of darkness? Darkness? Or would they be motion activated?
Yeah, we could certainly put them on motion or or timer. The number of people who go to their bays at night is pretty limited.
No, I understand that. And the security light, I think that's why I think it's totally adequate. It's it's on countryside. You happen to know whether that light is on during all periods of darkness currently?
When I drove out there after the last meeting, it was on.
I'm sorry, you broke up?
Oh, when I drove out there after the last meeting, it was on, and I drove the road twice. It was on.
Yeah.
In the meantime.
That 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 is really my understanding as well. So I think that's just fine. The ones that are on the building bay that are being proposed, they may well be on or off or whatever, whatever the owners choose, which is fine. But I am concerned only that there be as much light from that security light as possible for security as much as anything, not for traffic flow, really, because there really isn't much. Also, could you just review for me exactly the ADA access to these bays? There is a handicap parking space, but is there a ramp on the on the plan? And does there need to be?
There shouldn't need to be. These doorways will be at grade, and each unit has a walkway that would be adequate for access.
Okay, that's it. I have no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Warren. Tom Gagin, questions, comments?
Tom Gagin, no questions, no comments.
Thank you. Bob Wurchafter, questions and comments for Thad?
I just wanted to let you know that I'm on in on the meeting app now and that I have no questions.
Thank you. And Bob Dubus is recused. Roger Griffin.
No, this is Roger Griffin. I have no questions or comments. Only question, it's unrelated. Just kind of curious. Now, these are surprised, obviously, in that they're not there because maybe they're not required. I'm surprised that there is no, there were no exit doors needed in the back. Everything is actually still at the front, obviously. It's not, obviously not required.
The requirements for these units have increased greatly over the years, and they haven't put a second egress in yet.
Okay, very, just curious. Okay.
Great. Thanks. Thanks, Thad. So this is Catherine. The one thing we do need to consider, and I think Ally mentioned it in her staff report, on page four of five, under proposed conditions regarding the submission of a cost estimate, we did receive that cost estimate. I think all of you have it. And the total cost is something 61,220. And we have the breakdown of paving, drainage, retaining paving at 31,000 and some drainage at 22,000, retaining walls 4,700, landscaping 1,500, refuse allowance 1,500. So based on the estimate of site improvements, we can set an amount for a performance bond if we want to require that, which we usually do. So I'm going to open that up to the board for suggestions for the amount of the performance bond. Art Spru.
I guess Art Spru here. Unless there's a reason to make something different, do we make their performance bond equal to the estimate of 61,000?
It can't exceed 61,000. We could make it equal, or we could do a portion of that, depending on our assessment of what's necessary. I would suggest, if I might, that we not do a performance bond for the total amount. But for some portion of it, that is reasonable. But please go ahead.
Perhaps the 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 drainage drainage has to be, and the paving is the big two big items there.
Right. So that would be what? That's going to be 50 something, 50,000?
Yeah, about 50,000, yes. So I'll I'll start off with an open amount of 50,000. I mean, I'm I'm open for suggestion here.
All right. Warren Chain.
This is Warren. I don't feel I've got enough technical expertise to have an opinion, but 50,000 sounds like it would be more than adequate.
Yes. Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin, I agree with the $50,000 number.
Great. And Bob Wurchafter?
I can agree with $50,000.
All right. And Bob Dubus is recused. Roger Griffin?
I agree with everybody else. $50,000 seems fine to me.
All right. And I'm just going to check in with Ally. Based on our history, does this seem also as a reasonable amount?
I think it's reasonable. The planning board requires a bond, you know, to make sure that the infrastructure improvements have been put in place. So I think that that's a fair amount. And it could either be a cash bond or a performance bond. I would recommend we leave that up to the applicant, whatever they feel more comfortable with.
All right. That sounds good. So this is Catherine. I also think that the 50,000 is reasonable. So why don't we put that as our second condition, that we'll ask for a 50,000 either cash or performance bond? All right. And so we'll amend condition number two under proposed conditions to include the performance or cash bond and the amount of 50,000. The other conditions are standard. Are there any board members who feel that we need to add any conditions other than the ones as stated? So with that being said, I would ask for a vote.
Catherine, one thing?
Yes, Arthur, go ahead.
As our, I think our criteria says, the applicant will provide an as-built plan when they're done with this.
Yes.
Okay, that's, I just want to clarify, that's all.
Yes. We can add that specifically stated as a condition, if you like. It's supposed to be standard procedure, but we can certainly add it.
The only thing I'm concerned with is the stormwater. Again, I want to make sure that that and the grading is consistent to what the plan is. That's all.
Okay. So add that condition, that that the applicant submits an as-built plan. And as I mentioned, we're changing condition two to be the bond in the amount of 50,000, either performance or cash bond. And with, and the other two conditions are our standard ones on no deviation, and also that all exterior lighting we've discussed that shall be downcast and shall not illuminate areas off the property. So with that being said, with those four conditions, do I have a motion to approve the site plan with conditions as stated?
Art Spru, I'll bank the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second to that motion? All right, we had Warren and Roger make the second.
Arthur, sorry, Ally. I just wanted to know if you wanted to ask if there's any public comment.
Oh, yes. No, that would be good to do before we formally vote. My apologies. Is there anyone connected to the call, to the meeting, who would like to make a comment on this matter, or who has any questions for Thad before the board makes a formal vote? There being none, why don't we go to vote? There's a motion on the floor and a second to approve the site plan as submitted with conditions as stated. Art Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin, approve.
Bob Wurchafter.
Bob Wurchafter, approve.
Roger Griffin.
Roger Griffin, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also approve. So thank you, Thad. Thank you for the very detailed plans. Always appreciate it.
Thank you. All righty. Have a good evening.
Thank you. All right. So the next item on our agenda, you have in your packet some correspondence from Mr. Harrison, who is the Chair of the Chatham Airport Commission, and my response to Mr. Harrison. Basically, to summarize, this is in regards to our long-range planning efforts to introduce some rezoning for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. And as all of you know, there are portions of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center that actually do fall into the runway protection zone for the Chatham Airport. And we do need to consider this carefully. So Mr. Harrison, the Chair of the Airport Commission of Chatham, has written to us. We've written back that what we want to do is invite representatives of the Airport Commission to one of our planning board meetings where we will consider in detail the whatever we need to consider with regards to the runway protection zone and the location of the airport. Ally and I have discussed this. We're hoping that we can schedule this for one of our meetings in April. We're hoping to do it quickly. We're also hoping that we can have the Cape Cod Commission representatives present as well. We need to consider carefully, what are the guidelines from the FAA regarding development within the runway protection zones? We also need to carefully consider what the legal distinctions are, where the responsibilities lie, whether it's federal, whether it's state, or whether it's through the municipality or town responsibility with zoning to address these issues. So we just need to be very clear what the issues are and how best to address them. And so we're thinking that the best way to do this is just to have at least one meeting with representatives of the Airport Commission. So that is the correspondence that you have. I know you've also received some input from the public on these matters. And I think Ally forwarded to you my response to the public concerns, which is basically to say that we're going to vet all of these issues, but we'll do it in a proper way, in open meeting with members of the Airport Commission and and members of the Cape Cod Commission. So that's where that stands. I'll ask if there's any comments from board members regarding this. Yeah, I think the best thing is just to consider it carefully and properly. And that's what we'll be doing hopefully at one of our meetings in April. Regarding other long-range planning considerations, I think everything's going along. Certainly for West Chatham, we need to consider this airport piece. Art Spru will move ahead with subdivision rules and regulations. We've also mentioned, Ally and I have also mentioned to you that the Historic Commission is working on a proposed bylaw amendment that will incentivize the preservation of historic structures, and that is moving ahead. And again, shortly, possibly in April, Frank Messina will will meet with the board to present the proposed proposed bylaw amendment for that. And I think that's where we stand on long-range planning. Ally, did you have any other comments to make to the board?
Oh, Catherine, I think you summed it up very well.
Okay, great. So Yes, please.
I don't wish to prolong the meeting any, but with respect to the the letters and the interest of coordinating with the Airport Commission, it 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 does occur to me that we don't even have a draft of proposed bylaw regulations yet. And that I certainly would prefer letting the Airport Commission have at least a working draft, which may be closer to what we would propose for public hearing scrutiny, before we meet with them. Otherwise, it to some extent is, it's in the abstract. We, there's, there's nothing really different being talked about here than exists now. We have a zoning regulations that cover the area of the runway approach zone. But clearly, in all cases, the FAA rules trump anything that's in our zoning. That's no different than it will be once we have West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning proposed. It's also true that much of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center is not in the zone. And therefore, the thought that we would be changing dramatically the entire, the zoning regulations in draft form for the entire neighborhood center seems to me to need to have some discussion, given that much of the area is not in the runway approach zone. But the the basic idea that it troubles me a little is to meet with the Airport Commission when we don't have really anything specific to discuss.
Thank you, Warren. Yeah, those are all excellent points. It is true, absolutely true, that most of West Chatham Neighborhood Center is not in the runway protection zone and will not be affected. However, there is a certain portion of it that is. I think, if I could respond, what Ally and I are looking at is mostly this meeting will be to clearly understand, how to put this, the delineations of responsibility. Mr. Harrison, I'm looking at Mr. Harrison's letter in front of me, and in the first sentence in his second paragraph, which I was actually wasn't aware of, he says, since the RPZ does not lie within the confines of the airport property, land use restrictions are not enforceable by the FAA. So the land use restrictions may be in the guidance or guidelines of the federal regulations, but they are not enforceable by the FAA. So I think what what we'd like to determine is what are the restrictions and where does the responsibility lie to enforce those restrictions? Is it through state regulations or is it through municipal bylaw? And I think that's what we have to determine. And I think that preliminary discussion would be fruitful, even before we have the draft. That's my opinion. I see Roger has his hand up. Did you want to make a comment?
I guess this, when you brought it up, when we did the second paragraph, since we're questioning that, are we going to be get, we're going to probably be getting some legal guidance from the town or from somebody? Because this could be a little bit out of everybody's league.
Yes. Yes. Ally and I are planning to consult with town council on these matters. And again, yes, to just be clear on what we need to do, if anything.
Right.
But Warren, what you say is absolutely true. There are, there is zoning in place, which is equally affected in in exactly the same way as any new zoning that we would put in is equally affected by the runway protection zone. So it's absolutely true what you said. And Roger, also excellent point. And that's exactly what we want to do, is just be clear where the legal responsibilities lie. Ally, did you have anything to add to that?
No, not not particularly. I mean, we did really hope that we could have this coordination meeting before we brought back that new revised draft to the board. We're hoping that would be at the beginning of May, that the commission will bring back the revised draft. But we were hoping to have this coordination meeting before, just so we can have some guidance and get really clear, you know, exactly what Catherine was saying about the runway protection zone. And if the zone. And if the board, I think that, you know, if we want to put something in the proposed draft, it might be helpful to have that coordination meeting before, so that the commission can work on putting something in the draft for the board to review. That was the thought process, anyway. But happy to do whatever the board sees fit.
Does that address, Warren, does that address your concerns?
No, it does, certainly. I think we're all on the same side here. And with respect to it being outside of the confines of the airport and therefore unenforceable by the FAA, I mean, I, I, I think we would all prefer, if there were some clarity, as to who has responsibility for enforcing what are obvious safety requirements. And I would expect, although I'm not the lawyer, that we can certainly put in our zoning bylaw for areas within the runway approach zone, that whatever the requirements of the FAA are, are to be adopted by, you know, the town for, with respect to the safety, you know, all issues in the runway approach zone. So it's the town taking it over, if the FAA has, does not have the authority, but something like that. But again, I don't think anybody here is suggesting that, that we're not going to go along with what is required for airport safety, determined by the, the Airport Commission and the FAA, you know. It has not been a problem to my knowledge yet, even if there may be some trees that are too tall. And I don't see any time for revising the West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning bylaw either. But I think we're all on the same side on this issue, so.
Great.
Enough said, yeah.
Thank you, Warren. Any other comments on this matter before we move? Any public comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
David Bixby?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Bixby.
You mentioned earlier, I thought I heard you say that you're going to meet with the Airport Commission and the Cape Cod Commission?
Well, we haven't scheduled the meeting yet, but we were anticipating that the Cape Cod Commission would be present. And the reason for that is because the Cape Cod Commission is assisting us with the West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning. And because they're participating in that effort, it would be fruitful for them also to hear the conference that the planning board has with the Airport Commission specifically on these issues.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I do see that there's other hands raised, but I can't identify the people, for some reason.
It's Rick Levitt.
Go ahead, Rick.
Well, I, I just want to encourage you to go on in this vein. I think it's very important for the future of West Chatham Neighborhood Center. I hope you will look carefully at it, at the master plan in relation to the town's comprehensive plan. The two don't necessarily agree with each other. West, as you noted, the board is currently drafting zoning bylaws that will actually increase the population density in West Chatham. West Chatham already is densely populated. And currently, plans are moving ahead now to bring a modern senior center to West Chatham, and, and more housing for working families at all levels of income. So there's an inherent conflict here. And I don't have, I don't envy you having to dive into it. But any provision in the airport master plan that can lead to increased air traffic will be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. The airport is an important town asset. It has served recreational pilots for generations. The airport and community have lived comfortably together. The airport, anything in the airport master plan, however, that might lead to expanded activity, for example, commercial passenger flights and other commercial activities, should be discouraged as being inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. Chatham's airport, in my opinion, my humble opinion, should remain a small private plane airport, serving local residents. For a variety of reasons, reasons, including safety, a busier airport will discourage development of West Chatham Village Center. And thank you for taking this on.
Thank you so much, Rick.
Elaine Gibbs?
Yes, please go ahead, Ms. Gibbs.
Yes, thank you. I think that you're going in the right direction. I think this meeting is long overdue. Over the years, development has occurred within the runway protection zone, and nobody actually determined whose responsibility it was to make sure that the FAA guidelines are followed. The FAA, they are not the enforcers. You can imagine, they have thousands and thousands of airports. When towns take money, municipalities take money from the FAA under grant assurances, they are assuring that they follow the guidelines of the FAA. So that's where the conundrum is. There, there, it's very clear that the FAA says that land use prohibited within the RPZ are residences and places of public assembly. The fact that we've done it in the past, I don't think means that we should continue it. So I would hope that, and, and also, the owners of the airport is the town. The sponsors of the airport is the town, and the Airport Commission acts on behalf of the sponsor. So in my view, they are the ones that should be giving you direction. You shouldn't be giving them direction. You're not experts on the airport, and you shouldn't have to be. They should be telling you, this is within the current RPZ, let's hope it doesn't get expanded, but it, within the current RPZ, there are zones one, two, and three that are, you are considering multifamily housing. And I think that would be very unfortunate if that occurred, because it is a safety issue. The FAA believes it's a safety issue, that the runway protection zone should be left to agriculture and non, non-people events. So I think this is great. I think we need to get that definition, who is responsible, and therefore, you know, when you do the zoning bylaw changes, you may have to exclude those areas where you wanted multifamily housing. There's still plenty of room to do it, but not within the RPZ. So I look forward to that meeting, and thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Gibbs. So I do still see some hands raised. And again, I'm having a little trouble identifying them. So is there someone else who wanted to speak? Could you?
Hello?
Yes.
Yeah, I can speak.
Yes, please go ahead, Mr. Thompson.
And you, you, obviously, you raised some very good questions. Clearly, you need more information. Rick says, make some good points. Elaine's made some very good points. I'm not going to argue the issue now. You, you're going to have a big meeting. And I would suggest, though, that you do some homework. The community is, has put together a very comprehensive factual website. It goes under the name of comspeak.us. So that's C-O-M-S-P-K-S. And that will give you all, basically, all the information that, that you say you don't understand. Who has responsibility for what, what the proposals in the AMPU will, will do to, to the environment, et cetera, et cetera. So I would, would recommend that to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Any other comments from the public before we close?
I think he's the guy recruited.
I think I've, I think I've addressed all the raised hands that I can see. So if there are no other comments from the board or the public, I will ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Bob Dubus?
Thank you. Thank you. May I have a second to that motion?
Warren Chain.
All right. Great. So both Warren and Roger seconded. So let's do the roll call vote. Art Spru?
Spru, approve.
Warren Chain. And may I ask everyone who's not speaking to please mute your, everyone, please mute your microphones. There's some feedback. So Art Spru, Warren Chain has voted to approve. Tom Gagin? Tom Gagin? Are you still with, are you still connected? Tom Gagin?
Catherine, I don't see him, his name on the list.
All right. Thank you. So Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, approve.
Bob Wurchafter?
Bob Wurchafter, approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also approve that we adjourn the meeting. And let's note the time as six twenty-eight in the evening. Thank you, everybody, for participating, and enjoy the rest of the evening. Thank you.
Bye.